Let's do it. Okay, okay. I'll push another text. I will, I will.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah.
My glasses on. We'll call to order the August 19th, 2025 New Harmony Town Council meeting. But everyone, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Jeff Smitherman.
Here.
Laura Arndberg.
Here.
Rob Clark.
Here.
Well, Connie Wines.
I don't think Connie's with us. At least she's not yet.
Tom Williams.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. First on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes of the July 15th, 2025 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, second would be the July 22nd, 2025 special meeting minutes approved. Do we have a motion for those?
Sure.
Motion a second.
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Next would be the report of department heads, and I guess we'll start with Tom. If you want to start from the left here.
This is a report on the Park and Trails Board and Cemetery. So, first of all, at Murphy Park, the women's restroom faucet is leaking still. It was fixed, but it's leaking again, so I've instructed Jonathan, our super, to get a new faucet. So that will happen. This last Sunday, volunteers, our attorney Nathan Mottlin and Park and Trail Board member Andy Batt, constructed four new picnic tables for Murphy Park. And in doing so, they ended up, we now have eight tables in the new shelter, which is a nice full capacity look for it. And we were able to put an odd table down at the end of the Main Street Trail along the river. So it's kind of a nice amenity down there, which we will have to take off seasonally, but Main Street's the easiest route for that. It won't be a problem. Also, the Park and Trail Board has applied for United Way, Posey County's Day of Caring Project help. And we are soliciting them to help us again with more picket replacements around Playtopia and to help install the new barbecues that we've ordered for Murphy Park and one in McClure Park, and also to help do repairs on the lower counter shelving on McClure Park's bandstand. So we're looking forward to that. It's in September, I didn't write the date down, I think it's the 28th. And also, the Parks and Trail Board is having a special budget meeting, August 25th at 5:30 at Town Hall. This will be after a code renovation meeting in the morning, so it's going to be a long And this last Sunday, while Nathan and Andy were putting tables together, I was, after I watered the new trees, I've done that now five Sundays in a row, it's about two dozen trees to help get them through this hot spill. But Tom Gugenheim came over, our town arborist, and we walked through Murphy Park, looking at tree maintenance issues. The park really hasn't had maintenance. It's been, you know, fall down, react, or gee, that tree's going to fall, let's get rid of it. So he's working up a report to initially clean out the dead wood, make recommendations, possibly feed some trees that are struggling that would benefit from it, and then maybe have a contract with us for a biannual cleanup. I think it would be worth the expense. It doesn't sound like it's going to be too bad. He thought initially it might only take him two days, eight hours each day, it won't amount to that much. I think it'll be a great investment. And he's interested, he's local, he's going to end up probably giving us a lot of free time doing this thing. And then, okay, as far as trails go, the bumpy part of the school trail is going to be addressed as soon as we can, you know, as soon as we can finish up the River Trail repair. I know it's frustratingly slow. We're currently waiting for a gravel and rock delivery to finish it off. Our employee Terry has been doing a great job working with dirt to fill and gravel and cleaning it up and getting it ready, and now we're ready. We're just waiting for them to deliver. So hopefully this is the week and it'll all happen. It shouldn't take more than a day or two once we get the rock and gravel. Over at the cemetery, Jonathan and crew have finally removed the remainder of the big fallen tree on the lower north side of cemetery. I know it sat there a long time. There's all kinds of steep grade issues, wet dirt issues, but it's out of there, it looks much better. And then they have a challenge up by the loop pathway where there's been a washout through the blacktop, and they're going to work on filling that. We've looked at it and talked about it a couple times. But the big news, I think, at the cemetery that's been a frustration is the parking lot flooding. And we have a covert system under the parking lot there that's very decrepit and not working, and so it backs up and the parking lot gets flooded and we have to regravel it. But we had Blankenberger Brothers Incorporated out there to give us a quote, and they finally got back to us just today. And the quote is to put a 48-inch covert pipe under that parking lot with a 48-inch manhole and a 48-inch entry head wall. Their total quote for this job was less than I thought, but it's not cheap, $115,000 and But I'll be exploring ways to pay for that. I think it's something that's overdue, and it would just be a nice fix for that parking lot and for the cemetery. It's not going to get any better. Anyway, that's all I've got, Jeff.
Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, on the community and economic development, the new town website is almost done. It's taken a while, I'm sorry, but we're getting there. I think we're waiting soon, hopefully next week, for all you guys, I'm going to send you a beta version of the website, is what I'm waiting for them to send me, so you can see what it will look like live. So we're adding some new sections to the homepage. We're taking out a bunch of stuff that people weren't really using, and we're adding some new sections, like how do I apply for building a new permit? We've tried to make everything a lot more user-friendly, more streamlined, more accessible, so the online ordinances are on there. When the gas meters are done and we're ready for online utility payments, that will be on there. It won't be when it first launches, but it will be when we get ready for that. So we're excited about that. Hopefully it will, it will look a little different, but hopefully it will just work much better is the main hope. And the state is providing that for free. So all of the security features that we were trying to figure out, the state oversees, so we don't have to worry about personally messing that up. I am certainly not a cybersecurity expert, so they're going to handle that for us, which is great. The Wi-Fi grant, I hope everybody has noticed, I think is going great. I know the farmers market vendors have been using it at the WMI. Anywhere in town where you see One New Harmony Wi-Fi, that was that grant we got from the county. And Michael Gard, through One New Harmony, has been physically going around setting those up, and hopefully you've maybe used it or noticed it's available, and we're hoping at Coons Fest that's going to make a big difference for a lot of our visitors and vendors and all the people that come to town and all of a sudden can't call anybody. So, and obviously for the residents year-round, but it'll be a big test at Coons Fest to see how that goes.
If you can ask you a question on that, as a technically challenged person. When you get on there, I know there's like seven.
Yeah.
Is there a way to distinguish which one is in what location, so you knew the closest one to choose?
I know.
You know?
Basically, you just want to use the one with the highest bandwidth.
Just go by it.
The most bars.
Okay.
Because each of the different businesses, so we have one here, and we have one at Sarah's, there's one at WMI, they all have the same name, so you know it's the same signal, but they're numbered.
Are they like 001, 002?
Yeah. Yeah, and your phone should hopefully automatically jump to, but that's why there's so many. We looked into a system to have just one, and it was a lot more expensive, so we didn't do that. Upcoming events, hopefully, everybody's seen this, but we also just got a new ad, and we being One New Harmony, not the town, sorry, just took out a new ad in the paper, so hopefully you'll see these advertised. We've got a link now to the website to let people know about what events are coming up. But Coons Fest, of course, in September. Arts in Murphy Park is back this year, that will be in October. Meet in the Street is October 5th, so please come out for that. And hopefully you've all seen, we got a grant from the Efrumson Family Fund to do the outdoor movie series. So we've got family-friendly movies for the first couple, they've been going on at the Catholic Community Center. And as fall comes around, we're going to have more like date night type movies, so ET for Halloween, we're hoping to do one on the side of the Athenaeum, and then towards Christmas, we're going to do some indoors. Wilson's is working with us, and Thrall's Opera House to do vintage Christmas films. So those will be coming up. On the research front of things we're still working on, I had a couple follow-up calls with the IU Center for Rural Engagement. So they work to connect rural communities with resources at the university, with classes, with professors interested in doing research projects. One of the things I'm asking around about is for people to help us design trails amenities that we can put next to the river that is designed to stay in place in flood, so we don't have to take up tables and that sort of thing. But it'd be an interesting design project for a university class. But they also have a section on community and environmental resilience that I'm going to be talking to about the bridge, about flooding issues in town, and they do some work with mosquito and pest control as well. They have affordable housing resources, they do a lot in the arts. They do, if there's anyone here from the Legion, I keep meaning to tell them they do some veteran services as well. So just trying to see what's out there that they may be able to help us with, because that's all free. I also had a meeting with the president of USI, just reiterating the connection between USI and New Harmony, thanking them for their investment here, and talking about what programming that One New Harmony or the town could work with them to expand, so.
Newly elected president?
Newly elected president, yeah. Yeah, Steve Bridges, I'm sorry, the new president.
But not inaugurated yet.
Will be the new president. I'm not going to let you piss off. Making it harder. And ERAPP in Evansville is still working on, I'm sorry, the Evansville Regional Economic Development Partnership, of which Posey County is a part, is working on a regional arts and culture survey. And of course, we wanted to make sure New Harmony's represented in that for whatever goals come out of that plan. So just in communication with them, it hasn't been released yet, but just keeping an eye on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. No, go ahead.
On the water side, the Church Street project, which is the project to replace all the service lines up and down Church Street that have not yet been replaced in the last 10 years or so, that project has been let out. Turned out, we didn't have to put it out for bids, but we do have to get at least three estimates on it. Those are out, and supposed to be back by the end of the month, so hopefully that project can get teed up this fall, we'll find out. The water meters are almost, the water meter replacement project, which is replacing them all to where they're electronically red, those are all done, but just a handful. We've got two large ones, and then all of the meters here in downtown, which are in people's basements, they haven't gotten yet. But, so, you know, that project is 98% done and kind of pushing on him to get that finished up. They've also started the gas meter project, so maybe you may have seen them in your yards, putting the electronic readers on the gas meters. That goes a lot faster and a lot easier, because they don't have to get down on the ground and crawl in a hole to replace the meters and everything. I was surprised, I asked him how far along he was on that project this morning, and he said probably 20%. So the goal is to get those finished, the water meters finished, get the gas meters finished, get our systems all here in the office on the new thing, and then we can start to address the payment online system. But we kind of put that on hold. Laura's been chomping at the bit to do that, but, you know, we're like, look, we need to get these meters in, get everything settled on the building and everything, and then we'll start to get the system set up to where people can pay their bills on. We continue, oh, as far as the sewer plant goes, ERAPP, for those of you who have been at the last couple of meetings, you know, we had a public hearing on the ERAPP grant, the grant to get an OCA grant to do a major study on our sewer plant. That got submitted. We should find out sometime in October whether or not we get the grant or not. So that is in, and that's behind us. There have been various things still going on at the sewer plant. I used to tell you about them all, but I won't bore you anymore, because they're kind of mission-critical stuff. But electrical panel was replaced down there, they're all on the, you know, the things we'll approve on the payments. But we've got one last project down there that they're working on, and I didn't get a chance to check with him today, but.
That OCA grant, we'll know by when?
October.
October.
Yeah. I think it's at October. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. I guess you kind of covered what Connie would have had, or an I am too, on the public safety side. So public safety, on the fire department, we recently added them to the pest control contract that we already had with the town. They hadn't had a service really, just periodic, so we added them to that, the fire station down there. We also added them to the, I guess, linen service, or whatever you call it, that takes care of rugs and stuff, because we replaced all the floors and got it looking pretty good down there, so we want to keep it looking good and clean. So we put them on rugs for entryways and stuff to be done quarterly, I think, or every other month or something. So that's the fire department. We also had an invoice, I think, this month with them for restocking the emergency medical truck with medical supplies and stuff, that we take care of that on our truck, and the township takes care of theirs on their truck down there. And I spoke with Jim, and he had a similar invoice that he took care of, Mr. Scarfia, our township trustee. On the town marshal's side, he'll be going to the training academy, and he was here, I thought, maybe, but maybe not in here, for 10 weeks here, you know, in and out, not gone for the whole 10 weeks, but he'll be doing that, get his certification taken care of. There will be some expenses that he'll turn in to us for approval after his training is done. I think it's $500 for the training, basically, but we don't get invoice for that until after he's been there. Also, we're working on the town marshal's new offices down at the other old garage down by Kester's offices down there. It's under reconditioning by Mr. Noss, and Mr. Lovridge is working on the floors, and Mr. Underwood, we've kind of tried to keep everything local with contractors and stuff working on it, so he's working on the heating and cooling for us. We do have some of that on the agenda to ask for a little more money for that project, but we'll get to that further down the agenda. But that's kind of what's going on there. I wanted to thank the town marshal for, and the Relay for Life Group, wanted to thank the whole town for the hospitality of having them here last weekend. Town Marshal was in to help for their 5K run and traffic safety and stuff like that, but I wanted to pass that along to him and to you all, and to the town, and all of the patrons of the town that welcomed them so much, and they really had a good day. It was a hot day, but they had a really good day. I think the 5K was tripled in size over the first year, which was last year, which is a good thing to see for that. So that's pretty much what I have on public safety. I do periodically like to give a little update on our funds and fund report. We're, you know, we're quickly approaching the end of our second year in our term. You know, how many times have we heard, oh, that bucks is going to spend every dime we got? So, but anyway, our funds, we have spent a lot of money, but it's been towards very worthwhile projects. I don't know how many thousands we've spent down at the sewer plant and on equipment that's needed repaired or replaced and stuff, and other good projects, not just projects like that, but like the trail and the gravel and the repair and things we've been doing, trees. We spent a lot of money, but I would like to report that on inception of our term, January of 2024, our balance in the funds were right at 4.4 million in our whole, that includes investments in CDs. And I would report that as of last month, it was 4,259,000. So it shows we've only lost $150,000 in almost two years. So that's a good thing, and we've got a lot of good things going on in town. And I would say, you know, a big part of it staying up, the way it has, is property values, you know, and I don't think anybody here would deny our property values are going up in New Harmony, and so your tax structure goes up with it and stuff. So we're doing a good job, the town's doing a good job, not just us, everybody's doing a good job and spending our money wisely, but I always like to give that update periodically. So we do have our money still. We do have money.
Hey Jeff, I just say something about the new reports. Since Jeff's talking about that, I've put together a new report that shows month-to-date and year-to-date, the monies that have come in and the monies that are going out, and then balance it to our bank statements. So these guys, every month, will look at all of that, and then we will all sign off of it, and then I'll submit it to the state board accounts. So we'll have, we'll have very, very tight hands on the money that's in and out of the town.
Thank you, yes.
And we appreciate you putting that together.
Yeah, it's great to have numbers to look at in front of you all the time, you know, to see what we are doing or what we're not doing, or what we need to do, for sure. So, well, that's my report for public safety and our balance and transfer and our funds and stuff. So next, we have open forum. We try to keep, each person can speak on anything you'd like to speak. We're not guaranteeing any questions answered, because it can put us in a spot where we don't have an answer a lot of times, but we will get back to you on things like that. Keep it two minutes, come up here up front, please, and state your name and what you want to talk about, and try to hold it to a couple minutes.
Sorry, because I was in the back. I have a hand.
Go ahead.
So I'm here in two capacities. Hi, my name is Audrey Burnell Lambert. I'm here in two capacities. First, as the curator for the New Harmony Gallery and Contemporary Art, I let everyone know, after several months, we finally have new plaques at the Trees of Forty-Frute. So over near the Athenaeum, we have two trees, they're actually artworks. The plaques were just installed about four hours ago. So weather permitting, I invite you to go read them. They have information on the trees, the origin, why they're there, et cetera. So that is our gift to the town. I'm also here as a resident of town, first to say thank you to the garden club and anyone here that works with them. It has been just a thrill. Earlier this morning, I was walking on the South Trail to see how the gardens there are really attracting all the butterflies and the pollinators, so thank you for that. I also was slightly saddened to see that there was a section that was actually supposed to be held off, where there wasn't supposed to be mowing, where there were wildflowers, and it was almost fully completely mowed through. So I'm hoping that that won't happen in the future, because it is important to sustain all of our bees and all of our pollinators, so that's why. Thank you.
That was Tom's fault.
I don't know which field you were talking about, Audrey, but.
On this South Trail.
In the Indian Mountain.
I think Andy might answer that question.
And I will. I was unplanned on speaking. My name's Andy Batt.
Sure.
And I'm on the Parks and Trails Board, and that particular area is actually Indian Mountain property, and they gave us permission to protect it, and a different person was mowing and started on the one side and mowed until he saw the signs. I talked to Tom Smith, and he apologized. But there are still, I saw a monitor there this morning, one. I'm sure I saw a lot. But it was not the town's doing, it was Indian Mountain in error.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Jeanie Mottlin, I'm the president of the New Harmony Parks and Trails Board, and please, I thank you ahead for your indulgence, because I'm going to talk a little bit about what Tom did. I kind of feel like Tom glossed over a bit what he does. So you all need to know, Tom Williams, every Sunday in this heat, takes six five-gallon buckets, fills them with water, and takes waters between 22 and 24 trees at Murphy Park. Each tree gets 10 gallons of water. It takes hours. I just thought, everybody needs to know that. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah. Additionally, I also want to thank the town attorney, my husband, Andy Batt, a member of our Parks Board, and Tom Williams, for assembling our four new picnic tables. And besides that, thanks to your contact with Ben Nicholson, you borrowed his trailer, loaded picnic tables on the back of that trailer, schlepped them all over town. I encourage you to check out McClure Park, which has now picnic tables, it's wonderful, and it's about to have a new grill, fabulous. And take a look at Murphy, it's outstanding. It is so beautiful, the way the new picnic tables are placed, we just couldn't be more proud. Let's see, I wanted to tell you that. And I also wanted to do a shout-out to Terry, who works for our town. Terry has been down on the River Trail in particular, working like mad, and that area that was, just looked like a bomb was dropped on it, now looks fantastic. And I know it's not yet open, but thank you to Terry. Additionally, Terry schlepped, by himself, a picnic table down to the river, and not only have we been stopped personally to say, hey, thanks for the table, it's on social media, local social media, that people appreciate and are using that picnic table down at the river. So anyway, just, it's a volunteer community, and it's just fantastic.
I will say, it was Terry Brown that moved the tree out of the cemetery, too.
Oh, just saying, he's done a great job. Parks and Trails Board appreciates him, and we appreciate our liaison.
Thank you, Jeanie. Thank you, Jeanie. Anybody else? Diane?
Diane Sanders with Historic New Harmony, and I just want to remind everyone that USI's 101 Day, which is when they bring all freshmen out, is going to happen September 2nd, or sorry, September 9th this year. So Tuesday, September 9th, they'll be here from about 9 to 5, and we've got about 1,300 students coming out and growing. Seems like the world keeps growing up, so.
Good.
And if anyone wants to bake cookies, I know the Kiwanis would greatly appreciate, let's see, about 2,600 cookies.
It's a great event.
Yeah, spread the word on that.
Anyone else? If you're, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Debbie Matthews, I'm the commander of the Legion next door. The reason I'm here is because I had a request from the Indiana Oil and Gas Associations to hold an event over at our facility on the 9th of October. Unfortunately, I was a day late, if you'll get it onto the agenda. What they wanted to do this year, they were there last year, they have a conference every year over the Red Dragon, and then they're having a culmination banquet at our facility. Last year, we were expecting about 100 people, we had about 85. This year, they're expecting 85 as well, but they'd like to extend it to where they can play cornhole over here in the grass, and then also have beverages out here, so if approved by the city, then I would work with the.
We're going to have, we're going to add it to the agenda, and we'll have questions for you, I'm sure, in a few minutes.
Perfect.
But yeah, it's kind of warming everybody up.
Yeah, but then also, this is a volunteer town, and Legion definitely is volunteers, and we're looking for hiring somebody that is a bartender as well, so just put it out.
Thank you. Anybody else? In case you're.
I was going to say something about the wildlife, but it looks like we have a first reading of wild animals.
Well, we have something on the agenda, hoping to address to that. Okay, thank you.
After I hear that.
If anybody else is here that wants to speak on anything, if you're not on the agenda, this is your time to speak or say something about what you're here for, because it's the only opportunity, so. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the open forum. Thank you all for your input. Okay, first line of business here, we have the new office for the town marshal additional cost. So I guess that previous meeting, I guess, was it a special meeting? I can't remember, two meetings ago, we approved $10,000 to start that renovation down there. I have the estimates on those, the money that we were going to spend the $10,000 on. Looks like we're over probably, based on these, about $1,000 on that $10,000. I have asked these contractors to sharpen their pencils for us, they're not completed with their work, and they both have, one is already done a little bit, and one is working his best to do that. So we appreciate that very much. But I am here tonight asking for an additional, and talked with Connie, who's the second on public safety and working with me on this project. me on this project. For those of you who don't know, we're moving the Town Marshal's office to the old garage down there. It has a restroom, and he will have a evidence room there and storage with that room. And then there's an additional room for the office. And it's, it used to be the offices for the town garage back in the day. I don't remember how long ago, but at some point. So they, they needed heavy renovation, heavy damage water, you know, the pikes had busted and all that from, from the years of sitting in the cold and stuff. So we redid the plumbing, redoing the plumbing, painting floors, new, new fixtures in the bathroom, a new heating unit is on the proposal from Underwood. So heating and cooling, actually. So, but I'm here to put before the board tonight and ask for an additional $4,000 appropriation. Hopefully it doesn't take that. And I have these here for you guys to look at if you need to. The heating and cooling, we went with the smallest price unit, which is one that would replace the one that's currently in the wall that is no longer functional. So the others were the little mini splits, and then a mini split that would be a dual zone mini split. And one went from $8,000 to $4,000, and this one is $1,536 for that unit. So, and then there's the exterior door. For the moment, we're going to paint it and keep using it, but it is in bad shape. So we need a new door. It's an exterior door, and it's a commercial door. It has to open to the out, apparently is the rules. And they don't keep them in stock, and they're not cheap either. So I think that was $1,000. So we're already up to probably $3,400 in addition, you know, with the overruns on the first part. So I'm here asking for an additional $4,000 appropriation to hopefully finish that project out. So.
I move, I move we approve the additional $4,000 appropriation to not exceed $4,000.
Right, not to exceed $4,000. Hopefully we don't need $4,000. Have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second that.
You got a second? Any other discussion, questions?
Well, yeah, it seems like we're getting quite a big deal for cheap here. You know, and I think we've underestimated a little bit, but I think you maybe want to appropriate a little more money. In my mind, I've, I can see where we would be to be back here again, you know, another $4,000. I mean, I don't think, you know, this is really a major amenity for the town, and we're hardly spending much. I know it's a lot of money, but it's not really for what we're getting.
Yeah, I agree. And it's a great little spot down there. And I think we're, I think we're going to get there with this amount. I do. We may have to come back. The only question that there is, and this is due to some of my probably not knowing about contracting, but the floor, this LVT flooring you're putting in expands and contracts. One side doesn't have cooling on it, so that can be a factor. So I was talking to Greer Flooring today about that. And it's, it's, as long as it's heated, so we should be okay. As long as, it's the drastic changes in temperature that affect it. So it won't ever be cold because it's always heated, but it'll always stay warm, you know. So he seems to think we'll be okay on that side and everything. But could come back someday and need heating and cooling for that side. But I don't think so, right now.
How's the roof over there?
Roof is good. That's, the building is good, other than the door, the big roll-up door that lets you into that building in the back, that 4-inch flood we had last time, it flooded inside of that building, came under that door and stuff. So that's something, not as a public safety aspect, but as just a facilities maintenance and stuff, we're going to have to look at some work on that door.
Will they keep his car there?
Yeah, yeah, he keeps his car in. When he's here, when he's using it, that's where it stays down there. He'll be keeping his car down there as well, too. And we got to get in the charge of the money. Any other questions? Hopefully they have that done in a couple weeks, you know, a couple, three weeks.
I was just checking the balance on the public safety, Lloyd Public Safety Fund is well over $150,000. So I think we're just going to...
Yeah, yeah. And we have, you know, we've got his training to do, but there's, there's a education fund also that's got a little bit in it for that, for public safety. And then, you know, you always have to keep in mind, you may need a new car someday, or, you know, and there's always that big overhead of us, a new fire truck at some point. The town commission is, township trustee is in the midst of purchasing a new truck right now for the, for the garage. And our, we have the oldest truck, which is a ladder truck, I think of the 1991. So that soon, it soon runs out of...
I'm waiting on the next thing.
Expiration, runs out of expiration date. So anyway, that's neither here nor there. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the appropriations? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much. And I know our...
Can I take the opportunity, this is off the subject, but I keep forgetting to mention this to you. Diane, we got to find a place for those rocks.
A little pressure on you.
Remind me that we need to talk about that, because moving his car in there is just that much less space. And she knows what I'm talking about. We don't need to talk about now. I just, I keep forgetting.
I'm hoping to get a grant.
Good. Good. We got to find a place for those before they get damaged.
Good. Well, thank you all for that appropriation. We'll try to hold it within those bounds, for sure, to finish up this project. Okay, next up, we have a review of the abandoned vehicle ordinance. As you all know, we've been working hard on trying to clean up some blighted areas, or hoping to work even harder on that. Abandoned vehicles sitting around town that have been sitting with weeds growing around them, or sitting in yards and not being used and stuff. So I think in the last few weeks, we've had at least three gone. And then there's others been tagged, and residents been notified through proper procedures, certified mail, tagging vehicles and stuff. So if you see any out there, if you know of any, or if you got any, get them cleaned up, or get them gone, or whatever. But we're going to go just quickly over that ordinance, just so that people know what the rules and what, what we're looking at and stuff.
Jeff and I were talking about this, this week, because we finally are starting to pull some of these abandoned vehicles. And we, we thought it really might be a decent idea to go over what our ordinance is on this. You know, if, you know, when we all took office, you know, our job is, you know, we take an oath to abide by our ordinances. If we don't like the ordinance, then perhaps we need to change the ordinance. But this is our ordinance on abandoned vehicles now. This may be hard for you to see, but let me just remind people of what we're trying to address, okay? An abandoned vehicle is considered a vehicle located on public property illegally, a vehicle on a public street or right-of-way without proper registration or a state license plate, or a vehicle illegally parked. Okay, that's on our public streets. B, a vehicle left on public property without being moved for 24 hours. Okay? C, a vehicle located on public property in such a manner as to constitute a hazard or an obstruction in movement of pedestrian or vehicle or traffic. Goes without saying. D, a vehicle remains on private property without the consent of the owner or person in control of that property for more than 48 hours. Okay? So you're parking your, parking your car on your neighbor's lot, they got a problem with it, they call us, if it's more than 48 hours, we got the right to tow. E, a vehicle that is located on private property in a location visible from public property that does not have a current and valid license plate attached to it. In other words, got to be a registered vehicle. It's not registered, you're going to get towed. If it's in a place that's visible to public. Okay? F, a vehicle from which the engine, transmission, or differential has been removed, or is otherwise partially dismantled, or inoperable, and left on public property. Okay? In other words, you may have it registered, but if it's inoperable, it's going to get towed. Okay? You got a car that's broke down and it's been sitting there forever, the ordinance says we've got the right to tow. And I think there's been a misconception on that one, that people think, well, if it's registered, I'm okay. No, it's also has to be operable. Okay? G, a vehicle that been removed by a towing service or Town Marshal upon request of an officer. H, is a vehicle that's at least three models year-old, is mechanically inoperable, is left on private property continuously in a location visible from public property for more than 20 days. Okay? If it's mechanically inoperable, in other words, you're putting your car up on blocks out in your driveway because you're working on it, that's fine, but you got 20 days. Okay? For purposes of this division, a vehicle covered by a tarpaulin, or other vinyl, rubber, cloth, or textile covering is considered to still be visible. Okay? And lastly, a vehicle that was repaired or stored at the request of the owner, that has been claimed by the owner, and for which the reasonable value of the changes associated with the repair or storage remain unpaid more than 30 days after the date upon which the repair of the work is completed. We go through those just because we want to make sure everybody understands what's getting towed. Okay? And I think there's been some misconceptions, particularly about the part that, look, if it doesn't run, if you can't move it, the engine doesn't start, and it won't move, and you're not doing something with it, it's going to get towed. Okay? I hope that's constructive, because we're real sensitive about starting to tow these vehicles if people are unaware of what they're doing to get them towed. But we're going to clean the mess up, and we're getting there.
Isn't there a notice given first? Yeah, we're not sneaking up on anybody. I just want to clarify.
Well, the notice, actually, the notice is not in the ordinance. It doesn't say that we have to. What, what, in the rest of this, and this ordinance goes on, and you're welcome to go online and read yourself. I'm not going to...
All of these are online.
Is, yeah, they're all online. But what happens is, is the, the Town Marshal goes and puts a sticker on it that says you got 48 hours to solve the problem, or it's going to get towed. That's what the ordinance says we do. Now, out of courtesy on this first round, we've actually been sending certified letters, or actually knocking on people's doors, saying, hey, I'm going to sticker this before long. You need to do something about. We're not required to do that, Laura, but we have been doing it as a courtesy.
The first round, I forgot how many we did, six or something, six letters, certified letters. And of course, you get a response back knowing that they've seen it and stuff. So, and then at that point, I think it gave 10 days or something for a response on that. And then at that point, Town Marshal went with our orange tags, and also tagged them, which gave them another 48-hour notification. So that's kind of where that stands. We're trying to take the proper respectful steps, you know, get people opportunities. And most of them know, a lot of them, I've talked to them, Rod's talked to them, you know, before, just kind of say, hey, we'd like to clean things up some. And I know your neighbors would appreciate it if we could get some of this stuff cleaned up. So nobody gets mad until it affects them. But that's, that's the way things go.
Once they're towed, just a summary, once it's towed, you're dealing with the towing company.
Yeah.
Not us.
Right. We have a fund set up to pay for the towing initially, but once he makes a disposition with the car or whatever, we recoup our money, if I'm correct.
If you want the car back, you got to go pay him for the towing, and then he reimburses us for the towing.
Reimburses us for that.
A lot of these cars just go to the towing and never come back. Thanks for getting rid of it for me.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that, Rod. We, we are working on, you know, a lot of nuisance stuff, and some of it's, we're working on the codes first. I met with Andy and stuff, we're working on grasses and weeds, and talking about a lot of things. So we, we want to make sure we don't cut the wrong ones that are eight inches tall, or whatever. But it's a work in progress, or process, I'm sorry. But we are working on that, too. We're just trying to keep things looking good. Like I said, our property values are all increasing, and we want them all to increase, not one, not two, because it has a falling-down shed next to it, or a car propped up on blocks, or whatever. So, okay, thanks again, Rod.
Yeah, great job, Rod. After we take care of this initial...
Wave.
Wave of abuse that's, you know, people are tired of looking at, I'm hoping that the code will help prevent it in the future. I don't see it being a future problem. I think there's just been some old stuff going on, and, you know, we just need to take care of it.
A lot, a lot of the, I don't know what it was, six or eight we sent out, and I think we got rid of three that were towed or moved. And then the other five have suddenly got tags on them now that are registered and stuff. So some of them went that route. So some of them are still out of the ordinance rules.
If they're not operable.
They're not supposed to be parked in your front yard. That's another thing. They can be on the driveway, or under a covered carport, or things like that. But it's not supposed to be sitting in your front yard, even with a tag on it. So, but we'll keep moving forward on that and help spread the word. And if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to holler at us, or the Town Marshal, or stop by the office here. And we can show them the ordinances, or they can find them online for that as well. So, okay. Next up, we have a guest speaker under new business is our insurance agent, Mr. Andy Weintraut with Shultice.
McGowan.
McGowan, I'm sorry, name changed. I'm sorry.
It is. That's hard for me, too. Andy Weintraut with McGowan.
Andy is long-winded, so we've got a hook and a, and a electric taser and everything. So set to...
The stage hook comes out in five minutes. I'm going to speak quick. I just thought it'd be a good idea to come in and just do a brief summary. Everybody can relate back to their own homeowners, or your personal insurance policies, what the market is doing right now. And it's not friendly to anybody. But yours came out very well. The town's came out very well. We were very pleased with the, with the increases. We knew there was going to be an increase. It's just the drum roll until you get it. I just simply broke it down with this sheet. I know Jeff had, he's got some extra copies, and he's also ran a copy of what the company provided that I gave to Andy. We'll start out, this is for the August 26th of '25 through August 26th of '26, the renewal for the town's workers' compensation and the package policy. The workers' compensation is currently with Indiana Public Worker, Public Employees Plan, IPET, short. The expiring premium was $6,375. The renewal premium, $6,569, for an increase of $194, which gives us a percentage increase of about just a little shy of 3%. So that's amazing. One of the key factors there, and I put that as a sub-note.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, he's got it. One of the, one of the notes to keep in mind is your experience mod, the town's experience mod, is .94. And that's good. It is really good. Anything under 1.0 is a credit to the, to the town. Anything over a mod of 1 starts to be a debit, where they actually cost you more, based on what tasks the town has. You know, we have a Town Marshal, we have, you know, the, the, the street workers, the, all of that. When you, when you factor in each one, they do a cumulative, and they come back with, they calculate your mod for you. And it's based on your previous losses. Not having a huge number of employees makes a couple of losses, you know, a little more impactful, but for the most part, it's been very good. So again, just shy of a 3% increase for the annual for the work comp. Wonderful. The package policy, the package policy is a cumulative policy that includes coverage for the buildings, the property, the general liability, the inland marine, the auto, the commercial auto for the town, the umbrella, the excess coverage. Linebacker, the linebacker is your political coverage. It's, it's a, glorified DNO policy. I'm oversimplifying it, but it gives you your political coverage is when you make a decision, and if there's a suit against that, that's where you're getting your legal counsel, your, your coverage. And cyber. I would have hit on cyber just real quick. Remember, if you start doing online bills, you have that cyber exposure. This is a very minimal cyber coverage. We will want to enhance that when you go online with allowing people to pay bills online and having an electronic exposure, where you'll collect mon, funds and funds transferred. So we can talk about that in depth later. The expiring premium, and that's with EMC, an A-plus rated company, fantastic company. We have the county with them as well, and we've just had nothing but wonderful success. The expiring premium was $52,883. The renewal premium is $56,510. The adjustment's $3,627 for a difference of just a little over 6%, a little over 6% increase. We're seeing some homeowners going up 25%, some commercial policies on average 10% to 15%. So, well under the average. The note I made, you have the detail from, from the one, that top sheet.
This one?
No, the other one. Yeah. That's the sheet that was provided by EMC, and gives the actual breakdown of each category that I just mentioned. But the two of, that were the most impactful to that increase was the property increase over the expiring. We're paying $1,378 more for the property coverage than we did the previous year, mostly due to the fact that the property values went up. You know, it's, there's an inflation guard, commonly referred to as an inflation guard, an automatic increase on the properties. Do what? Do what?
One minute.
One minute, oh God, I'm sorry. No, I forgot what I was at, I got to try.
You messed it all up now.
I'm Andy Weintraut. But that's just a little over a 6% increase. The property, 1,378 of that $3,600 increase, so almost, no, not quite half. And the linebacker coverage, ironically, the linebacker coverage are basically our DNO exposure has increased because we live in a very sue-happy litigation society.
DNO, directors and officers.
Yeah, directors and officers, yes, sir, yes. And that was, that, that's an increase of 680 just for that. And then you see the other increases that you've been made available.
And we have the policies here and stuff, then let me include it, if anybody ever wanted, everything's open door.
Questions, then this won't go against your time.
Oh, good, I'm done. Okay, what do you got?
So, what's our general liability, what's the, what's the amount?
General liability, we have $1 million on the base policy.
Okay, what's, what's the excess on the umbrella?
The excess is five.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we're covered up to $5 million.
You're covered up to six total, five within, one underlying and five excess.
Okay.
Yes.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Do you cover our fire trucks and stuff?
I do through several policies, yes. I have, that's, yeah, we have a couple policies on that, the New Harmony Fireman's Club and the.
And we split with the township.
Yes, and I break all that out for Andy and, and, yeah, that's kind of a convoluted bill. I have to give half of it, give it to you guys and the other half to the township and, yes, sir, yes.
Well, good. I don't know, how long have you been doing our insurance, Andy? How long have you been doing our?
Oh my goodness, I inherited the policy. I've been here 21 years and I inherited it when I came onboard, so we had it prior to that. At least 30 years, close to 30 years, yes, sir.
Thank you for your help.
So, Andy, by attorney care. Yes, I can ask a question about the cybersecurity in relation to our park camping at Murphy Park, and we've just gone online with it for reservations. Does our current coverage for cybersecurity, is it enough for that? It's not a lot of money, but we don't want to start.
What we're more concerned about than the actual amount of money is what it might do to someone's credit. If my credit was compromised because I made a financial transaction with the Parks Board, I'm coming after the Parks Board. Well, you may have a third party handling the transaction for you and they may have coverage, but as you know, very minimalist, very minimal. If you're receiving money, I would highly encourage you to take a look at that. We've got an additional $1 million worth of cyber coverage on the county. They handle a lot more money, of course, the county's taxes, and it's, it's less than $5,000 a year, and it's based on the amount of money they handle. So, we could get $1 million worth of coverage for the town of New Harmony and it'd be much less than that. What we have now is really very, just very basic, and it would be more to protect.
So, once we're online for payment, would it be covered together?
Oh, yes, any, any aspect of the county, of the, of the town government would be covered under that cyber extension, yes, sir. So, any, any subsequent committees or anything like that, yes.
Okay. And I'm pretty sure the program we're using probably has some cybersecurity, but Andy is one that's dealt with.
So, it's point-to-point encrypted, third-party, and all they do is deposit money in our account?
Yes. And, and, and what happens is, it doesn't mean there's not going to be somebody else there to take care of that, but I'll use pollution as an example. I was out the other day, we were driving down the road, this was earlier in the spring in a crop duster. We caught some residual overflow from the crop duster. I have no idea who the crop dusting company was, but I know what field they were crop dusting, so I'm going after the farmer. And that's exactly what they would do in this. Now, back to your, they're, they're going to include the town in the losses, and if we don't have the appropriate coverage in place, we won't have legal defense costs. And more times than not, it's that legal defense cost that gets us out of it and pushes it on the firm that we hired to collect the money. We just want to be able to step back from it and not have any skin in the game, and that allows us to do that. However, it would cover it if we were truly at fault, and if we were, but it gets us out of that exposure. But to your point, it's critical that we make sure that that, those firms that we join forces with, they have provided the town a certificate of insurance showing their limits of coverage, listing the town as an additional insured in regards to that, not just a certificate of insurance, but truly an additional insured status. That makes their policy our first line of defense, but when they go after municipality, you guys have all the money in the world, you know, and it's, it's just, it's easier.
We just told them how much we had, didn't we?
Next meeting, that's down to $500.
Is this a contract that we're?
No, sir, it's actually an endorsement to the policy. It's a supplemental application that we would ask some questions. They want to know the checks and balances, the safety procedures, and things like Mr. Back pointed out, you know, answering who the third party is and what their limits are, that helps reduce the cost as well. Very easy to do.
We'll look at that.
I would like to have that as part of our review.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
As soon as you can do that idea.
What I'll do is I'll go ahead and request the supplemental application and we can start gathering some data and I can at least put a price together when we're ready to go.
And that will prep us for online bill pay at some point too.
And that's where I was headed. At some point, you're going to take payment online for the water and the gas, and it'd be nicest to be covered and be done with it. We live in.
We live in that world.
A society where we just want to be able to have the coverage and know that we're going to be defended in court and let somebody else do it.
Thank you, Andy.
Is that it?
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. All right, next up, we have first reading, the wild animal.
Relay for Life, which is going to be.
That's gone, that's great. Well, well, we haven't.
I thought we were, oh, you're going to do that at the end?
I was going to do that at the end, I'm sorry. First reading for the wild animal ordinance, Mr. Clark's been working on it. Thanks, Andy.
Pat is here. Pat came to our last meeting and mentioned that, you know, she had concern and I think it received a round of applause whenever she said something about it, that of all the wild animals that we have, the skunk problem and so on and so forth. So, that set me to thinking a little bit about, okay, how do you address a problem such as that? And, you know, one of the things, that's a fact that we're not going to change is, look, you know, we all live in a river bottom, okay? I mean, we're going to have wild animals. It's nature that we live here. Some people may even say that's part of the charm of living here. But in my mind, we certainly don't want to make the problem worse. You know, it's a problem whenever you literally, almost every night, can't go in your backyard because you got skunks there. So, it got me to wondering and I started doing research and looking, well, how do other towns address this? Look, this is not unique to New Harmony, okay? I mean, Indianapolis has this problem, you know, with raccoons and skunks and stuff. So, I did some research and borrowed from a lot of other towns, and I was careful to try to borrow from towns our size, and I'm going to suggest that this ordinance be adopted. This will be a first reading. I suspect there'll be a lot of people that may have comment on this, and that's why we do one or two, maybe even three readings if we need to, because if people give us input and their ideas, we may go, never thought about that, that's a good point, let's modify it, second reading, then it gets a little better, and then finally we have something that perhaps we want to pass. But this, this is my attempt to at least address the issue to say, to recognize, let's not make this problem worse, okay? So, this is an ordinance prohibiting the harboring and abating of non-domestic animals. Whereas the town of, Town Council of New Harmony, Indiana recognizes the importance of maintaining public health, safety and property integrity within its town limits, and whereas the presence of non-domesticated animals such as raccoons, possums, coyotes and other wildlife in residential and commercial areas poses risks, including disease transmission, property damage and threats to pets and residents. And whereas the intentional or negligent harboring or abating such animals contributes to their continued presence and increases the likelihood of human-wildlife conflict, now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of New Harmony as follows. First of all, definitions. Well, what do we mean, what are we talking about when we say a non-domesticated animal? A non-domesticated animal is defined as any wild animal not customarily kept as a household pet, including but not limited to raccoons, possums, foxes, coyotes, skunks and deer. Harboring, the definition of harboring is knowingly and intentionally providing shelter, food, water or other forms of subsidence or refuge to a non-domesticated animal, okay? The key word there is knowingly and intentionally. I mean, if you have a bowl of water out behind your house for your cat, okay, that's not knowingly and intentionally doing it for the wild animals, you're doing it for your cat, okay? So, that's the definition of harboring. Abating is any action that encourages the continued presence or return of non-domesticated animals, including but not limited to leaving food waste unsecured, maintaining structures that provide nesting or bedding opportunities, or failing to remove attractants. Attractants, for the purposes of this ordinance, does not include garden vegetation, bird feeders, bird baths or the feeding of squirrels, okay? Every law, you got to draw a line in there someplace. Somebody might say, well, squirrels are wild animals, I hate the things. Well, okay, we're drawing a line saying if you want to feed your squirrel, that's fine. Okay? Prohibition, it shall be unlawful, so this is what the, this is what it will define. It shall be unlawful for any person, household, business or entity within the town of New Harmony to harbor, adopt or attempt to domesticate any non-domesticated animal on public or private property. Abate conditions that attract or sustain non-domesticated animals, including but not limited to trash, refuge or other garbage that is not properly or contained or stored in an approved trash receptacle. In other words, if you've got trash setting out on the curb in a bag, that's abating the wild animals, okay? They should be in a receptacle, you know, that we get from the town for the trash pickup. No bags sitting out because it attracts wild animals. We know that's the case. Number three, intentionally feed, shelter or otherwise encourage the presence of non-domesticated animals. And then here is the list of exceptions. This ordinance shall not apply to licensed wildlife rehabilitators operating under a valid state or federal permits, activities conducted by municipal, state or federal agency in the course of wildlife management, feeding or providing nesting structures for birds, temporary sheltering of injured wildlife for the purpose of contacting appropriate authorities. Harboring, harboring does not apply to natural areas, gardens or other normal areas where animals might naturally occur. Section four, enforcement of penalties, violations of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine. I would suggest by the time we get to second reading, there's some discussion from all of us about what we think that fine should be. Each day a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. The New Harmony Code Enforcement Officer or Town Marshal shall have the authority to investigate and enforce it, and the rest of that is just legalese. So, that's what I would suggest is a very rational statement to say, we've got a big problem here, we don't want to make it worse, no trash out on the streets, no harboring and abating wild animals. And I will leave it with that and see if anybody has any initial comments. Otherwise, that's, whenever we do a first reading, we'll make copies of this, it'll be out on the front counter if you want to get a copy and take it home. I don't have them made yet, don't ask me for one to none, I think you can stop back tomorrow, we'll have them out on the counter.
I really appreciate you, Rod, for going there and doing this work. It'll be interesting to see what the feedback's like.
It will be.
I hope we get some.
I'm sure we will.
And quite frankly, if people are opposed to this, that's okay, I want to hear it. Because, okay, maybe there's a point there that we didn't think of.
Other ideas or, or, yeah, things we left out maybe even, so. And next month's meeting, open forum, will provide that opportunity for you to speak before any action is taken for the second reading on this as well too, so. Anybody have any questions or thoughts or anything on this at this time or? I thought the power went out there. Okay, so, so we're just moving on to a second reading for next month's meeting. We don't have to vote on anything tonight, but that was the first reading for the proposed ordinance on the wildlife animals. Well, we have them, that's for sure. Some of them are beautiful, but some of them are scary, that's for sure.
Stinkies.
Okay.
Well, and one last comment that I should have made whenever I, look, feeding wild animals is not good for the animals. It's, it's not good for the animals. Wild animals need to forage for their food. Laying cat food out every night for the wild animals is not benefiting the animals. We may think they're cute, but we're not benefiting our other residences, your neighbors and people that you're attracting them to their yards and everything too. And secondly, it's not good for the animals either.
I agree.
I have a question.
You may.
Just so, just so I.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's okay, go ahead.
Next, next meeting, there will be a second reading and people will be allowed?
Yes.
At, at the open forum, you, you can speak on it. And we may, if there's questions, I mean, like now, if it's not abused or whatever, you know, yes, we could probably answer some questions.
The open forum always precedes any action that we take. So, everybody's heard about it now. Come to the next meeting during open forum and you're welcome to give us your feedback or anything, some of which may make us go, well, second reading here, maybe we need to adopt those, maybe we punt it to a third reading.
And feel free to approach Rod anytime with questions.
Is it possible that if somebody?
She's my neighbor, we're sharing the wild animals.
I hear you, we all have them.
Is it possible if somebody's really passionate about, they can put themselves on the agenda for next month?
Yeah, sure. I mean, if somebody really wants to speak, you can put your name on the agenda, you know, to address an issue you may have individually or something.
But one key issue involved with this, and I hope you all picked up on it, is by adopting this, we're saying no bag trash out on the streets, okay? Which we know has been an issue, a problem. I have neighbors down the street that have been doing it. This will be the first time we have an ordinance that says you can't do that, and you're opening yourself up for a fine.
Well, and our waste management contract also says they will not pick up anything other than their containers, which have the lids on them, so that, that's our ordinance as well, our, our policy for waste management.
Kills two birds with one stone.
Yeah, it just needs to be closed and closed, and dumpsters around town need to be closed as well.
Well, and no feeding in your backyard for nature movie purposes, that's.
I agree. Okay, all right, let's move on. Next, we have a bid for municipal tree removals, Mr. Williams and streets and streetscapes and trees and all the fun stuff.
Trees just scare me now. I look at every tree as a liability and I love trees. So, this is another group of trees, came from three sources this time, street trees from private residences, parks and trail board for trees in Murphy Park and a big tree in the, at the cemetery. We had two bids taken, I went around with both companies, looked at everything. One company takes pictures of the trees, the other one just lists them. The last time we had a big project like this, American Eagle did win the bid and they are doing it again this time. They, if we agree to this bid and all the trees I picked and choose, you know, we've gone over it with, I've had second opinions with our arborist. American Eagle is looking like $4,000 less than their competitor there. Still though, it's a $21,000, $175 bid as it stands for the ones we're choosing. I've omitted two of the four park trees. The Parks Board decided they could take the arborist's advice to maybe wait a couple years and just keep an eye on them. So, that's what I'm proposing that we approve. Now, the one that's the heartbreaker is the big Getalpa tree at the cemetery parking lot. This company, American Eagle, cut a huge branch off of it to help preserve it a couple years ago. At that time, they said, oh, you should just cut this down, but they're in the business, so, you know. We had another big branch fall down on it, our town. years ago. Uh, at that time, they said, oh, you should just cut this down, but they're in the business, so, you know. We had another big branch fall down on it. Our town arborist said, yeah, it's time. It's hollow inside. I mean, it still looks pretty, I mean, it's a fabulous tree. But American Eagle gave a $5,900 bid to take this tree down, uh, and that was almost $4,000 less than the other company. The other company was over $10,000. So I'm thinking that, uh, we should take the arborist's advice and just bite the bullet and get this good price. I think it's a good price, even though it sounds like a lot of money. It's a big job. They will be sure and not harm the antique iron fence that sits in front of it. Otherwise, it's dangerous street trees and a couple of dangerous park trees that we really should deal with. Be keeping an eye on other trees in the park and around town. So that's my proposal.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid by American Eagle on the tree?
What was the amount? Twenty-one what?
Twenty-one thousand, 175 dollars.
Twenty-one thousand, 175 dollars. For how many trees?
It's, uh, question, one, two, three, four, and three small trees, so...
But one of them's really big.
Yeah. No, five and three. It's eight trees altogether.
Okay.
And one is like, you know, three-tree trees, so...
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval from American Eagle?
I second.
A motion and a second? All in favor or any other discussion?
Just, we don't have to vote on it. There's a standing policy about replacing trees that are removed, correct?
Well, that's something that Connie Winesapple, who isn't able to be here, but she's abroad, is going to attack or, or get on when she gets back. We haven't really started a replanting program yet. Uh, we've been talking to Tom about it. This fall will be the time to do it anyway, so we're hoping we can get it started at least. Yeah, that's a policy that, you know, and we'd like to, if it's in front of a home, we'd like to include the homeowner on the decision of tree that we decide on, so they're happy and we're happy. But we want to replace them, and it's our choice to replace them.
Isn't it a five-to-one ratio or something like that?
The Parks Board has it three-to-one.
Three-to-one.
For a large tree.
Yes.
So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna start that.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. If Jeannie was wanting to ask a question, maybe we can do it afterwards or something.
She was giving me answers.
Oh, okay. Okay. She gave me one, too. I don't know where it... Okay. Next up, we have approval for two scanners, uh, $399 each for the clerk treasurer's office and the deputy clerk treasurer there. Andy, want to elaborate on what we're doing or what your request in here?
Yeah, this is just more optimization of everything. So I get the bills, and then I get a check for it, and I have to do a paper copy, and we file them. What this does is I scan the bills in, it attaches to what we're gonna pay. It's all automated. I can pull up the voucher, and there's the invoice right with it. So it's just automation, and I forget, there was something else. There's something with utilities, because I'm getting one for Carmen's desk. Oh, any kind of notes or anything that come in with that or adjustments, we can scan and put it right into the person's account.
She's, and Anne has given us the...
And I talk to other clerk treasurers, especially Jody in Posyville, and she uses them, and I'm going down there to watch the process.
All right. We have a motion to accept the request of the clerk treasurer to purchase two scanners for their office for $399 each.
I so move.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries on that. Okay, we need to get a unanimous consent to amend the agenda to add an item or two. I think Mr. Clark may have a second that he was gonna add.
Yes, you're right. I about forgot. Yes.
Like a, uh, motion to amend the agenda to add a couple items. Will you, I'll make that motion?
Do we need to say what those items are?
Well, we can. I'm gonna afterwards, but one's the American Legion request for their permit, and I don't know what yours is.
The other one, the other one is when we approved all the ordinance changes, the last time, uh, we had, uh, there was one on paying the town dep, or the deputy marshals. What we passed, the verbiage said, uh, that we would pay them biweekly. On, on the deputies, we pay them once a month. So because that got passed as an ordinance, we need to amend that ordinance to say that the town marshal, we pay them once a month. It was just a clerical mistake.
First, we need to get a unanimous consent on that. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I, I move that we amend the agenda to deal with these two items tonight.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. We'll, we'll go first with the American Legion's permit request to add it to the agenda. We have Deb here, who briefly went through it. The special events permit application is for Indiana Oil and Gas Association banquet to be held at the American Legion. Uh, they have a conference at the Red Uranium for the week, I think. They have, I believe there's quite a few people. I think it's every year down there. Uh, so they are requesting the use of the land behind, uh, their building and the, and the town's office building here and the grass area up here by the memorial. Uh, they plan to have outside activities at cornhole, a little music and stuff, and the, did I skip over the date, I believe, is, uh, October 9th? Uh, so you've got the hours here from 4:00 p.m. to midnight. Uh, we can discuss that, too, in the permit, but, uh, so they wanted to do cornhole. They are gonna go with the ABC board for a temporary permit to have alcohol outside on the premises and get that permit. Also, they are asking, they were asking for parking out in front of the building for sponsor cars. Uh, we, she and I discussed that today. They were wanting to park them so that they would inhibit traffic, you know, and sticking out, and we discussed, and she wouldn't, they would park them vertically as a normal car would park, uh, if, if the permit was approved. She, Deb is the post commander, uh, and her officers are, is that?
Gerald Mueller.
Gerald Mueller, Jimmy Haggard, and Diana Miller. Personal responsible would be Deb, the post commander, and she has her phone number included here, date of event, 10/9/25, 4:00 p.m. to midnight. Number of participants, up to 100. Um, number of spectators, not, not appropriate there. Uh, area extending from the New Harmony Post 370 in the back here, uh, at 516 Church to the parking lot of the post office. And the, I can hardly read this, use of this, well, that was a use of the street in front for the cars, but we discussed that. It's not gonna inhibit traffic or anything, so. And then list of individuals to benefit would be the Legion, of course, and other businesses in New Harmony. A successful event will encourage participants to frequent the venues in the future. Provisions for crowd noise, traffic control, exterior speakers will be kept to a minimum level to play music, use of the street to park sponsor vehicles, parallel, not vertical, or not, um, at an angle, as we're amending it to say that, and to be used to, to cordon off the area. Cornhole boards set in the grassy area by the Veterans Memorial, and Deb will monitor that as well, or monitor the area. Sponsors will park vehicles at vertically or parallel in front of the Legion and the city building. Speakers on exterior building playing music, no louder than other businesses. Alcohol permit to extend to Legion Post 370 license to cover these areas, so guests may have alcohol outside of the facility. And signed by Deb Matthews.
So there's not a bar outside? They can just take the drinks outside?
I'm thinking they're just gonna serve, yes. So Deb is here if we have any questions, concerns. I guess we would, uh, make a motion to approve first, uh, and then we can discuss and have questions. Have a motion to approve the event permit?
Was there insurance on that permit?
Uh, that, we will have...
So the, uh, Indiana Insurance, or the, excuse me, the Indiana, Indiana Oil and Gas, they have, uh, sort of get insurance, and then we have one as well that I can extend out.
Yeah, that would, that would be neat.
And you have to part the permit process before we can pass it.
Yeah, and that's what, that's part of it. So, yeah, I mean, we can go ahead and discuss. Would it be listed as an additional insured, like what he...
Yeah. It's important that we're named as an additional insured.
Yeah, yeah. You'll, you'll have to name the town as additional insured, especially with it being on our property out here, too, as well. And that's just something you talk to your insurance people about. It's like a rider, right?
It, it's not a big deal.
Something all the permit, all the events do, you know? I don't know how much you...
Yeah, I mean, our garden club takes care of this nice little area over here, so, you know, they might be concerned, I mean, alcohol's involved.
I wouldn't be concerned, to be honest. Last year, they were very mild. It's not a big, then, I mean, you probably didn't even know that it was going on. She's very, because we're, we're trying to make sure we try to take the noise down for our neighbor that has kids.
Right. There's not many of us that live close.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be concerned. It's not like back in the old days, remember, type of rumble and all that? That's...
Well, that's not what I'm thinking. I just want to make sure that we're covering if anything...
If some accident happened. Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Let, let me ask this, because I was gonna propose that we approve.
Sure.
But really, this is in October?
Yes, October 9th.
So I'm not sure that we need to deal with it tonight, because they need to come back in September. Let's go ahead and ask our questions, but I, I don't think we need to make a motion to approve until we have the additional assured and everything is all in order, then we can approve it. You have to ask 60 days prior. So you've asked, so you're on, you know, that, that's not a problem.
Deb and I spoke about this today. They need to know that they're gonna have approval so they can make their plans and if, if... So what I told, what I told Deb was if...
Contingent.
Contingent, that we have the ABC permit approved, you know, and that we have insurance rider approved, and I think that we know the cars are gonna be parked horizontally.
We're sort of like in a catchaway, too, because we need the city's approval in order to go to the alcohol.
Before you move forward. Sure. But, and she's aware that, and our, you have to have security, like I told you, when you have outside alcohol, I think it goes with that permit. They have to have a police officer or some type of security that is with that. We, we talked about all this today, but, uh, so...
Are we sure of that?
I'm pretty sure that is part of it. You see them down at the gymnasium, they, and whenever you're having alcohol and stuff...
No, I think, I think that is...
The requirements changed in 2024.
Okay.
But my...
Alex might not...
I'm gonna let the alcohol, tobacco, or tell me what we need as to what I do this mission, because I have approved of them that we're meeting their requirements as well. Uh, because in, in Indiana, you can actually walk down the street drinking, you just can't be drunk. That's a revision they made in 2024.
Not quite.
No. That's not true.
If, if the town were to adopt that...
Adora.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't adopted that.
So that's, so that's probably where the hangup comes in, because the town hasn't adopted that piece of it.
Correct.
So that would be an ordinance that you guys would pass in the future if you wanted to do something for...
If we wanted to, yeah, 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 if we wanted to.
I'm just trying to get the...
Sure.
If, if we had passed this, frankly, wouldn't even need to be, well, they're very on...
Well, except they're on our property. It's not just, yeah, but...
Hang, hang on a second. Alex, does the ABC permit to be outside require you to have security?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, and a, and a outfitted area.
Yes, a broke outfit.
Under 201, number 21, uh, through Indiana, I've had. Yeah, and I usually, and I, and Aaron and Jonathan has been incredible to work with. They're super easy. All of the police officers are so easy to work with around here. Hang on a minute, I'll, I'll look you up. Yeah, I have to, you know. Yeah, but no, it's, it's very simple. As long as you have somebody there, you're good. And it has to be the biggest thing, uh, because we will apply for a 24-hour license, so the biggest thing is, is I, I say from 6:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. Right. Just in case, but just in practice, that's it.
Okay. All right. We have a motion?
My only comment, this is a Thursday night, is that right?
It is a Thursday night, yes.
So could we pull the event inside at like 9:30?
I'm anticipating because I'm not gonna have lights.
Yeah.
That they're gonna come in when it gets dark.
So could we, I know your event's gonna be longer, but could we say everybody would go inside by like 9:30, just so for folks nearby with kids out of school?
I don't see a problem with that, because I anticipate. They went inside last year because they were playing cornhole in the, in the back, and they went in.
And she and I, again, today, discussed the time, and that was one of my concerns. Well, I know, they're our neighbors. Not a lot of us, but they're our neighbors and stuff, so, and it on the weeknights.
That's my...
Okay. Okay. Somebody want to create this motion? Whatever it is. Which way are we doing it?
So we're moving, making a motion to approve contingent, contingent on the insurance, naming us an additionally insured, and that everybody will go inside.
And they get their ABC...
Their ABC permit and...
Security.
Security.
Whatever the permit requires.
And everybody will go in by 9:30.
Yes.
Okay.
That sound good, fair to you?
It is very fair. It allows me to proceed with the state, so it works out great.
And the vertical parking and not...
And I told him my...
Let's get a second here.
So I think...
Well, we want to add that, too.
Well, because I want to, because I want to discuss that.
Who's the first?
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Who was the first?
Laura.
Laura made it. So the second's what we're looking for.
I'll second.
We have a second. Now, discussion.
Okay. You do realize, I mean, making this business about parking out here, I mean, look, that's state road.
Right, and, and a...
And I'm not sure you even ask, uh, I'm not sure we have any jurisdiction to say what you can or cannot do out there.
And they asked for this last year, too, and I told them no.
Okay.
So I'll just go back and say, you know, these are where we're at, and it's a no on that. You can go ahead and put them out there, you know?
Normal parking.
You can, you can, well, but, you know, but if the state police shows up, what we tell you, you can do...
Yeah.
They don't care.
Well, I mean, it'd be like parking any other car. They're gonna park it, but state police not gonna say anything about that. But if they stuck them out in the road, they would, they could or would say so. We would say so.
Well, even our town marshal would.
Yeah, exactly.
But I wouldn't be concerned about that.
Okay. Just making sure you understand that's not our street.
I do. There's a question that was asked, and you don't know the answer if you don't ask, so...
We talked about that today. Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, I, the only other thing I would say, this contingency needs to be wrapped up at our next meeting. You know, we need to have verification at our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll put together a little list of all that for you, too, or somewhere. I will, okay? What you need to make sure that we have for us, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck with that. Okay, next, Rod, was your last add-on?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. You know what? Just so-
It's raining anyway.
Yeah.
It's gonna rain anyway.
For the benefit of you guys, here was Ann's note to me. So we're amending what we passed last month with all the ordinance changes, and we're amending the portion dealing with the town marshal to say it's paid monthly the last period of the month.
It goes back to what it was.
Back to the way it originally-
The deputies.
The deputies. I beg your pardon. Yes, the deputies. That's all we're doing. It was just clerical error, but, you know, if you don't clean this stuff up. Now, it's your job to keep all this stuff straight.
What do you-
Which one is that?
You mean how to pay them that way?
Which one is that?
No, not how to pay them that way. All these amendments to the ordinance and everything.
Do we know the ordinance? Yeah, that's right. I'm looking for it. Deputies right here.
Yeah.
Do you have the ordinance note?
Paid monthly on the last pay period of the month.
That's not-
That's what the minutes say.
I changed it in the minutes.
Okay.
To be correct.
Well, you took liberty. We're affirming her liberty that she already got.
Okay, all right. But we don't know the ordinance number, do we?
And we already approved the minutes, so I guess it's-
Fixed.
Already fixed.
Do you know the ordinance number?
Not off the top of my head, but all I added.
You can find it?
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like we're good. We need to vote on anything? We need to vote to amend that?